This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome, everybody, to the city council meeting for Vader for Wednesday, March 19, 2025. Oh, I gotta do this. Okay, roll call.
Randy Hall. Sheila Goff here. Jason Daly.
Here.
Michael Ferguson. He has an excused absence. Mike Parsons. Is it here? Mayor Shire.
And Mayor Shire? Um, we have a forum. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. Number one, the comprehensive plan status reported in is in the packet. Email questions to James at the planning at Vaderwa.org. Seven questions. Number two, Vader May Day Committee needs volunteers. Contact Anita at the Little Crane Cafe. And number four, the Fourth of July committing committee needs meets March 29th. Contact Ken Jocelyn if you'd like more information. I believe you could probably call here at the City Hall and get contact information for going to. Council reports. Hearing none. Moving on to agenda approval.
So I just say for March fifth, I'd like to approve the agenda for March 19, 2025.
We have a motion to approve the agenda for March 19, 2025. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike Parsons. Minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion carries. Minutes approval.
You need to have everyone vote.
Oh, oh. Everyone that approves the meeting agenda. Say aye.
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 I think, you know, aye for me. Any notes? Motion carries. There we go. Minutes approval.
I'd like to approve the minutes for the city council meeting for March 5, 2025.
We have a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for March 5, 2025. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mike Parsons again. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval. Admitted end of February vouchers for 225. It are $42,493.83, and I make a motion that we approve that.
And I second it.
We have a second by Sheila Goff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Oh, yeah. Wait a minute.
We need to approve the.
Oh, we need to approve the vouchers for the end of March 2025 for $53,658.16. And. We have. They've been amended.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your assessment.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Sheila Goff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none. It is approved. Special reports. We, do you have any special reports today?
I can't talk about something.
We had a shared button here. To talk real quick about what's been going on.
I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I had a personal incident I had to take care of. But for February, I don't think that was discussed. There were 330 citizen contacts, four on shift calls, 16 traffic stops, three infractions were written, one criminal citation, on shift calls, four off shift calls, 15 total calls for the month of February were 19. Any questions for me?
No, we're just glad that they got that guy over there.
Yes.
Did they get the guy running around with him?
I think that's the guy that.
Same guy?
Yeah. Moving on to public comment. And we have.
Glenn?
That's me. The reason I'm here is a article in the paper last week after the meeting I was in before where Joe aside, he said he was going to call the attorney and cancel the research on the legalization of marijuana. And so that was what I thought. Then in the paper last week, it read that they were waiting on a report from the attorney on the process for the marijuana legalization. And again, in the agenda tonight, that's in there again. And I've had a number of people contact me and everybody feels the same way I do. That I talked to. There's some that agree that I want it. But I want to see the city survive. And marijuana is not going to make it survive. And there are people who will, if it's 1,500 bucks. I know that one lady got up the last time said she can roust up enough people to raise up 1,500 bucks, and so can I. So that shouldn't be an issue for the town because I talked to the developer. And he said, if all this marijuana stuff is coming in town, he's not going to build. And he's going to pull up all his improvement for the city of Vader. Because the reason it was outlawed before was, one, it stinks. The odor. Somebody wants to argue with that, go to Longview, pass there, little facility, ride down the expressway, you can smell. And there's not much, this is like a little bowl. And so everything comes in from the west, blows this way. Like that. And every sound and every smell and everything goes right through the town and up the hill. And it would affect property values. People would not want to buy homes that smell like marijuana. And that's what will happen. I come from the East Coast and they did that, not marijuana, but other business processes that had odors. And you just came over the rise and the hill and you knew where you were because you could smell. And I don't think the city would survive it. The other thing that was a process when we voted on those ordinances was we don't have a police force. And the people didn't want to spend the 2,005, 250,000, which I know is considerably more than that now. Do they want to pay the taxes that it's going to cost just to get the police force in here? Over and above what we are paying now. So I'm just, I was very upset when I saw that they were still in there and they're still going for it. And there will be a lot of people complaining about it, a lot. Because they don't want it in their city. It's going to bring more crime into the city, which we don't need. And we already have a place selling it right down the hill. I mean, that's not that far.
Where are you talking?
Down at the Citco Station. Go on down there.
In Casa Run?
No. At exit 59.
There's no marijuana sold in exit 59?
In the, in the Citco Station. They sell one other, they sell another product in there, but it's a marijuana based product.
They don't sell, they can't sell marijuana in there.
Okay.
Delta nine that they're selling.
Delta nine.
That's a drug.
It's not pot, though.
So why do we need more pot? Why do we need more of it? Why do cities that have a police force like Winlock and Toledo not have it?
Revenue.
What's that?
Winlock doesn't have it. They okayed it. They're waiting to get a license. There's no licenses. Winlock has approved it. Toledo is a, is a green light. So it's.
They don't have it, do they?
Because no one's came in and you're thinking people are lined up to come into Vader. They're not.
Well, there's no reason to have it then. Why do we need it?
Well, that's your opinion, and we all have our opinions.
You can grow your own, or you can go down the street and buy it. I don't want it to affect, you know, you already grown probably your own and you have you go out and buy it and you smoke it, your own property. How do your neighbors like to smell blowing over into their backyard?
Well, kind of the same as goat poop and everything that's.
No, 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 totally different, totally different.
You know.
Yours is airborne.
Well, you're comparing other businesses where you're from that they moved in that wasn't marijuana that were odorous that you're comparing that to marijuana. So she's just comparing what you're comparing to something ridiculous as well.
Yes.
Well, number one, correctly, it's not ridiculous because it's an airborne smell. And that's what I'm talking about, an airborne smell. They said they were going to put filters and things in down here. They said the same thing in Longview, they're going to put filters in. But you drive down the expressway when the wind's blowing and you can smell it. People close their windows and turn their air on. You can't put your windows down.
Well, we're representing the town, and if you did go on Facebook, I put it on Facebook, and the majority of people are all for it.
No, the majority of the people responding, I saw your post, the majority of people responding are the people who smoke marijuana. You go to the whole town and I think you'll find a different report.
Well, a lot of people came forward because people like you judge people like me.
I'm not judging, I'm not judging anybody. I'm talking about a product.
And they came forward and the town said, yes, I asked, what do you want? Your wife made a comment also, and the majority of the people said they wanted. So.
Everybody who says they want it are the ones who smoke it.
Not everybody.
Oh, so you mean if people smoke it, they don't want it? Why don't they want it? That's a fair question. You're telling me.
Know the revenue, the revenue that.
The revenue, they did a research, they did a research on the revenue based on the sales you pick up on the city of.
You're acting like we're trying to sell.
Do a survey. Do a citywide survey.
Survey, you'd see that it was like, it was like within a few hours, all the people.
You're only going to get.
I've had people contact me, say they want to come here and talk because people like you.
This is how it's coming.
Now, people like me, I don't make offensive statements to anybody.
Your time's up.
Yeah, you took care of half of it, so I still have.
No, 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 it was up when I said it.
I've listened to you stop me in the middle of a sentence because I only have three minutes and you're going to chew it up.
No, I talked to you after the three minutes was up. I said it over right here by Jason.
We understand. We understand that there's some frustration out there.
Well, you're going to get more frustration. I'm not making a threat, but every possibility that can be used to stop it will be used. And you're asking me to pay additional taxes because, and because we're going to have marijuana in town and we're going to have to have a police force, and now I'm going to have to pay additional taxes. So are you willing to pay additional taxes or expenses if we don't have it? Would you be willing to contribute to help pay for the $1,500 we'll get? If we don't have it.
What you're talking about.
I know you don't. I'm not a rebel, but I understand what is right, and marijuana is not right. This town, when it was young, had bordellos, had many taverns, had a hotel. We had all kinds of things in this town. And thank God, they got blown out of here. And I mean that seriously. Because where I live, my front pasture in my house, we use as a detour because they couldn't keep their cars in the road when it went up the hill and they wound up in my front yard. And I've had four rollovers in my front yard. And that's because people couldn't. The turn is a mile turn, and the only thing that saved my grandkids from one of them being hit was a telephone pole. That's what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Ken. Any other public comment?
We had a gentleman by the name of Kyle Wheeler email in and ask that the agenda and packet from the March 12, 2025 Criminal Justice Training Commission and email thread, the entered as public comment, is quite lengthy. If anyone would like to read it or would like a copy of it, I can get you a copy of it. You'd like one as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get it tomorrow.
Jason, this is.
Yes, Joe.
I'd like to address something that Kevin said real quick before he leaves.
Sure.
Kevin, I want to reassure you and the public that after that last council meeting in February, where we voted to table any work by the attorney. The attorney's work was absolutely paused, and there has been no work or movement on this issue since that time. It's been totally paused.
And why is that?
Why is that? Because the city council voted to table it until a later time. The city council has not yet voted to reestablish the work since then.
She had two weeks to write the ordinance up from the Fourth of February to the 19th, and nothing was done. So somebody had to tell her not to move forward on it.
No, I told her not to move forward on it after that particular meeting. During the time prior to that meeting, we're trying to establish an ordinance. If you remember, the, the meeting before that, I brought in a substantial amount of information for the council from other cities and how they wrote their ordinance. The idea is that the city could have customized an ordinance that would fit our needs. And so that's why the amount of time had gone by trying to establish an ordinance.
The council voted to have it green, to have an ordinance wrote up green on the Fourth.
No, we did not.
Approved by the, it was approved by the council.
It was not approved by the council. We said that we would look into it.
By the council, you're the one that said no.
We, we said that we would look into it.
Council instructed Joe to bring it to the attorney and start writing up the ordinance.
Start looking into it, and then at the next meeting, it was canceled.
Look at the YouTube.
Yeah, Mike, you're not.
Mike, you're wrong. You maybe need to look at the YouTube.
Yeah, the council. To have you start writing ordinance, the ordinance was not done when the council voted to pause working on the ordinance. That was all I wanted to say. Thank you, Kevin, for your public comment.
You know, we worry about the cost of the $1,500. How much is attorney going to receive to write an ordinance, do the research, they bill what they owe? Figure that out, see how much we're going to get. Good night.
Okay, moving on to city business. Number one, councils discuss legalization of marijuana businesses. We've, we've done that. Do we want to talk more about it?
About the motion from last week, are you not going to go further to, you know? I mean, you've got to move forward from that motion.
Motion that we cancel all of this time wasting on marijuana and move on with other important things in the city.
First of all, I have to be, I made the motion, I have to be the one to cancel it. But I was planning on doing that as well anyway because of the division in town. There's the, the small amount of dollar amounts and the fact that we are moving forward on our annexation. And I don't believe that we will need this minimal amount of money. We are. When Ms. Goff brought this to our attention, we had been struggling, a struggling city for, for many, many years, and we have been asked to think outside the box. And she and I both thought that we could safeguard the city with writing an ordinance that is very whatever to our needs, like Joe said, and safeguard the city and pretty much get free money. But it is. It is too much of a hassle for the little tiny bit of money that we're going to get, even though it is a yearly, a yearly thing. So at this point, I would like to rescind my motion on writing a ordinance to legalize the marijuana businesses in Vader. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mike or Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Oh, wait. Any opposed?
You know I am.
One opposed.
Are you leaving?
I'm leaving. I am so tired of being manipulated, manipulated by you guys at these meetings. It's on again, it's off again. You play your games. I'm, I'm, I'm over it.
Motion carries.
I think we need to vote still.
Yeah.
First and the second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
Jason, can I make a comment, please? This is Mayor Shire.
Yes, Mayor.
First, I, I really appreciate the council making this decision. I was prepared to make a statement tonight to let you all know that I was going to veto any marijuana business ordinance that ever passed the city council, which would require the council to have a super majority of four or more votes. I stand by that just for future reference. So unless city council thought marijuana businesses in town was the best thing since sliced bread and everyone and at least four people were going to vote yes, we should just not waste our time on this for now. Not needed, so thank you very much. I'm glad we're past this. We can move on to some other things that delight people instead of upsetting people.
Yes. Any, anymore, anybody else? City business, number two, council to consider becoming a member of the South Louis County Chamber of Commerce. It costs us $125.
I should probably speak to that as well.
Yeah, because I don't know much about it.
South Louis County Chamber of Commerce has been, for the last couple of years, has been getting together. I've been going to some, some of their meetings. They're doing a lot of work to promote Winlock, Toledo, and Napa Vine. You know, they're all members of the chamber. They've been putting together like little tourist videos to put online and things like that. Just a pro, to, to promote the cities, which of course promotes the businesses within the cities. And so I really would like the city to join the Chamber of Commerce. Because I think we could, first, we get way more out of it than, than the $125. And second, to support this organization that's doing a lot for the communities.
I make a motion that we approve the city, the chamber application or.
I got it. We got a motion by Mike Parsons to become a member of the South Louis County Chamber of Commerce. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. City business, number three, council to, it's May Day season again, everybody, council to consider the May Day special event application. They, we do this every year for, for May Day, for the May Day Committee. I would like to make a motion that we approve the special day event application for May Day.
Second.
Seconded by Michael or Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Council to consider May Day Committee request for closing the section of A and six for parade and games.
I make a motion that we approve the closing of section A and six through fifth for the parade and games.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the May Day Committee request for closing A and six for parade and games. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number five. Yes, Mr. John.
I just want to tell you, you're, you're doing a hell of a job covering for Joe. Just give you a pat on the back, buddy.
Thank you, John. I'm very nervous. He's, he's big, big shoes to fill here. Okay, number five, council to consider May Day Committee request, city funded event insurance cost up to $500.
I make a motion that we approve the city funded event insurance cost up to $500 for May Day.
Here we have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve this city funded event insurance. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council to consider May Day Committee request to waive the Warden Park rental fee. This is another thing that we do every year for the May Day Committee.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the Warden Park, Warden Park rental fee waiver.
We have a motion by Mike Parsons to waive the Warden Park rental fee for the May Day Committee. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number seven. Number seven. Last one. Council to consider May Day Committee request to provide trash service and equipment usage. This is something that they, they've done yearly is they've gone down and picked up the trash for the May Day stuff.
And we're asking to use barricades and safety cones from Public Works.
Oh, and they're asking to use barricades and safety cones from Public Works. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve that one.
Okay. Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the May Day Committee using trash service and equipment from the city. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hall, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number eight. Council to consider ordinance twenty twenty-five oh five, the sewer connection fee credits. And I have a thing from Joe. He wants me to, you still want me to read this, Joe? Okay. Okay, so as, as for the ordinance, this incentivizes developers to extend our public sewer system into new areas previously in service. The city council will need to approve every agreement with every developer. As a private company, they can build our new infrastructure with our engineering design centers at far less cost than we could. For example, a new ten home development is six hundred feet away from our public sewer. The cost of the developer to build this extension to the public sewer is eighty thousand dollars. Under current Vader fees, each home would have a sixty-five hundred dollar sewer connection fee, which is sixty-five thousand dollars. The developer would spend eighty building the new sewer sit, the new city sewer and ask for the sixty-five thousand dollar in connection fees to be credited for building our infrastructure. This encourages development on the edges of the city, encourages development in general, expands our sewer utility at no cost to the city and adds vital new customers to the utility. Know that while the sewer connection fee credit could be considered a loss, if the development never happened at all, the loss is far greater. For example, each new home roughly would pay a thousand dollars in annual sewer bills to the city. In just six years of billings, the city would have recouped sixty-five hundred dollars, the connection fee, and will continue to collect the thousand dollars a year forever after that. Joe strongly recommends that the city council approves this ordinance. It's another very strong tool in our code to spur development.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five, sewer connection fee credits.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to, to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five oh five sewer connection fee credits. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And last one. Council to consider professional service agreement with Jackson Civil. You want to comment on that one, Kristen?
This is for them to be able to do the work this summer on our roads that's funded by the TIB grant.
Can I make a motion? I will make a motion that we make an agreement with the professional services of Jackson Civil. Do I have a? And seconded by Mr. Parsons, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, elected official comments. Any elected officials online want to make any comments?
Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Thank you for helping.
You know, sweat. I want to encourage people to reach out to the Vader May Day Committee or the Fourth of July Committee. I want to let you know that people that are involved in that are a joy to work with and, and it's a fun day and it's a fun thing to be a part of either one of those things. So please reach out if you have had a little bit of time. That would really help out, so. Hearing no other elected officials that want to comment, this meeting is adjourned at six thirty-five.